I'd like everybody to raise, arise. Let's legion, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those that weren't with us, we took a dip in the pool today, tonight. I doubt it. Jogger Bill used to. Are there any amendments to the agenda? And just so that Matt knows it, I have got the pedestrian safety committee on mine, so if that requires some discussion, I don't know if I should amend that.
I sent everybody revised agenda.
Well, okay.
Changing item 7A to...
Apparently, I didn't find that one. That's all right. That's okay. That's good. That's good.
To Citizens Advisory Council as opposed to senior. That came in the second. And then B is the pedestrian safety task force.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Anyone else have any agenda, amendments to the agenda? If not, does anybody need to disclose about any items on the agenda?
Maybe. I'm the sixteenth gala chairman.
Thank you for mentioning that. That suffices, I think. And Jeff?
Andrew is on the board.
Thank you very much for coming forward. It's very simple, I know, but it gets out on the table and nobody has any issues with it, and at least, I don't think you do. If you do, please speak up. Okay. We're good to go. We don't have any visitors scheduled tonight that we know of. Approval of minutes for May 23rd. Any omissions, corrections, or errors?
I've got a question. On page two. There's a second special events permit. It was seconded by Alderman Matt.
Sure.
So it's either Mark or Matt.
I noticed that.
But it can't be both.
We did.
There was a, one was, it was real close. Okay. So, does it matter who?
Well, Joan's got her notes. She has her notes.
It'll get corrected?
Yeah.
But thank you for pointing that out, Lowell.
Either the Mark will be corrected, or...
Well, Matt did the second before and added the second after it, so.
Any other corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did we actually make a motion to approve them, though?
I thought you did.
Not yet. I was gonna say here, so I didn't know if I could make the motion or not.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Lynn made the motion. Trying to move this along.
Second.
Second by Mark. Okay, we got it this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See what happens when I play down another falls there. Get all confused. Okay. Any discussion, questions on warrants?
Other than I need to sign, Lynn, did you sign?
I did.
And, yes, he did sign. Okay. Citizens comment otherwise on items that are not on the agenda. One hasn't, okay. Business, we're gonna move right into Bixby Memorial Free Library, Bixby Gala.
So the reason why this is on the agenda is in accordance with our alcohol ordinance as it relates to city property. I do not have the authority, nor want the authority, to grant approval of alcohol at the Bixby Memorial Free Library, so that requires city council approval. And also because it is thought that the, depending on the weather, there would more than likely include some outside consumption on the porch that is not within the city right away, so it's not as if we need some outdoor seating agreement. This property is owned by the city. So what is being sought is approval of the city council to approve the serving of alcohol both inside and outside on the porch. I'm assuming this isn't out on the lawn. I believe that this is...
No, it's just for the porch.
Okay. So that's what permission is being sought, and a copy of their application was in your packet.
I will make said motion.
Make a motion? Matt, second it. Any discussion?
Is this something where they have their own people get server's license, or they're gonna have like the anecdote be that...
Joan handles this. They actually, they have certified server, so it is different than, you know, there's a special permit for our galleries, bookstores, and libraries, and that's what this falls under. And Joan, we didn't copy them all, but we actually have copies of the certification of the servers.
And a certificate of insurance for that event.
Even though the city owns that property, and we insure the property and some of the contents, the library has a general liability policy that they purchase for their operation and workers' compensation on their employees. So as Joan mentioned, she has a certificate of insurance that does not have a liquor liability exclusion, so that's covered through, it would be covered through that. I will tell you, we own the property, and if, and as you know, Mark, of anybody, that if something did happen, the city would be on that list. But anyway, we're not primary.
It's gonna be a fun night. Get your tickets now.
I already do.
Little free advertisement. That's good. Motion, seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So Carrie? Lynn's gonna abstain. Thank you, Lynn. All right. Vergens Falls Park, Harmony Park. On the agenda, any discussion that we need to have?
So anyway, at the last meeting, the city council passed a motion that you can read in your minutes. Since that time, I did bring this to the development review board, and the development review board has not set a date for a public hearing on this because there is, they do not have a specific detail of both the Harmony Park structure, if you will, nor the pavilion. So until the DRB has a complete application, there is no public hearing scheduled. So I just wanna let you know that. Obviously, from the meeting tonight, you know, I mean, I'm happy to spend some time relative to potential need for amendments to land use permits, but I really would prefer to use my time on a real project that somebody absolutely wants to, that the city council wants to move forward with, and then I would go through the steps both with the district coordinator, floodplain folks. We can continue discussion with Green Mountain Power if need be, but there needs to be a specific project that I'm sharing.
Well, let's ask for consensus. It's not a vote, but just this consensus of all people favor of some of the items that were mentioned down at Falls Park, a pavilion, not necessarily pinning it on the ground where it's gonna go, and Harmony Park, and Frisbee Golf, and like I said to Mel, I says, "We don't wanna spin our wheels." So we really need to figure out some of the other works. I still have a political card that I could probably use. With Green Mountain Power, I just, I don't like playing those games, just 'cause I end up having to end run when I like to work with people up front on the ground and see if we can get it to work with them first before we try to go to the high levels and get them to move off ground zero. Not that they will, but. Mark, are you in favor of any or all of these projects? Nah, I mean, excuse me. I'm looking at you and I'm thinking, Mark.
Yeah, I heard about what Lynn said, that, you know, this being the Rotary's eightieth year, that, you know, they really wanted to have something in the ground, and I would just encourage, maybe we should be seeking a different location, Lynn, perhaps. Aside from that, I am for development of the basin. I think it looks great down there. I think it will continue to develop. I hadn't heard anything this evening that would make me feel differently about that, with the exception of maybe trying to encourage the Rotary to find a different location.
Mark, you're good with it? Lynn?
I'm good with it, but you need a leader, and that's the issue.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand, and I've told them right there, I can't be that person.
I know.
I've got too many hats and nobody wants to step up to the plate, so if there's someone out there in TB land that really wanna take the bull by the horns and take charge of that committee, we sure could use a good, strong volunteer, of which we'll talk about volunteers in a few minutes, but...
In theory, I want to see the basin developed.
It's a beautiful area, and it's one of those things, I think, if you build it, they will come. That's the problem, see.
I'm in favor. I'd like to see a pavilion down there. I'm not sure about the boathouse. I don't know if I'm wild about that. Pavilion, yes.
One of my concerns with the boathouse is it means you'd have to hire an employee to most likely manage it, and that's an added cost to the city of which, I don't know if, there might be other means to fund that, but I don't know if that's something we could probably use, employees better use.
I don't think I'm wild about the Frisbee Golf either, because I think if you want people to show up, you don't want frisbees taking people out.
No. But there's a lot of land down there that they feel they could do a nine-hole, and a lot of people play either early in the morning or late at night, so, or late in the evening, but I understand that concern. Thank you. Jeff?
I would just echo what Matt said about the Rotary Club, because I think it's a great project, and I also wonder if it's not the right place, and I can't help but think that it might be great at the Bixby. It might just simplify things in a whole lot of ways to just simply move the project and that could continue to go forward. I like the project a lot, and I love what's happened at the basin. I'm not opposed to continuing to improve it.
We're finding some limitations that we didn't know that we had.
Right.
However, you know, it just, until you start some of this, you don't know what's going on, and so, but, thank you for everybody's input. So I feel that we do agree that things should be happening. As to how we don't use up some of your valuable time, needlessly, that is, maybe we need to get a committee together that can come up with some recommendations that...
I mean, I don't have a, you know, as I say, I don't have time to do it, Mike, then I say, yeah, okay, I'll call, I'll call what's his name, you know, but I don't wanna get, I don't have any problem, you know, speaking to a Jeff Green. I don't even know if Jeff is still the environmental coordinator for this district, but having a telephone conversation, exchanging a few emails is okay, but I can't spend a half a day drawing things and all, you know, this type of stuff on a project that hasn't been given the green light. But I'm happy to learn more, and don't shoot the message.
No, we're not.
Happy to learn more about your restrictions, because I think that that's, you know, we gotta, you really do need to understand really how much your hands really are truly tied as it relates to those two matters, both floodplain and land use permit.
Right away.
And right away, we know that as well.
Three. I hadn't considered Jeff's idea of going to the Bixby. I don't know if that is a possibility, Lynn?
Well, actually, someone else suggested we go to the main park in that back corner by the elderly housing, but I didn't think that'd be a great part, a place unless everybody's deaf in there. To, that corner seems to be sort of neglected anyway. I hadn't even thought of the library, so maybe Matt and I can go check out both scenes and see.
Before you do, let's ask Mel the magic question. Is there any restrictions that we should be aware of about right-aways? Any other things that we should be, know before we just start arbitrarily picking a spot, try and move it to it?
I don't know about any right-aways back there. You know, I think the, you know, the DRB process, you know, it will involve sound, all right, hours of operation. There was a number of things that they talked about, you know, hours of operation, decibel level, maintenance plan. Those were some, those were some of the concerns that they had. I mean, they obviously talked down at that location, you know, they knew it was in a flood hazard area, those types of things, but, you know, I don't know what the, you know, I don't know where these are typically located, if they're typically located in the middle of a big business district where the ambient noise is huge anyway and nobody would hear it, but, you know, if it's in a quiet area with residences nearby, I can see how, you know, somebody might not be in love with this thing, you know.
It does have the decibel levels on all of the, they're all low. My concern about the Bixby library is the ground is really sloping, so there's not a lot of opportunity to put something in.
The other thing is, I don't know how it's properly there is between the Bixby and the People's Bank, if there might be a spot in that corner. So, food for thought, I think we're at least trying to uncover anything that we might wanna watch for, but that gives you people some opportunities to start researching and...
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I really would like to know about Harmony Park is how big is this thing, all right?
Roughly sixteen by sixteen. Sixteen-foot circle, we're told. When I put it on the drawing, I said, "We're gonna call it twenty," just for, for...
Five.
Not huge. So, and I think you could probably oblong it if you so desired, depending. Okay. Discussion there. Thank you. Sam Fishman, Memorial Pool. I'll let Mel start, and...
Well, what I wanted to start with was recognizing some folks. I mean, let me just tell you, we got kids in the pool on Monday, June 12th, which was the target date for swim team to start practice, and the ever-changing target of when the elementary school wanted to have kids in the pool, but I can tell you, we were able to get pool, kids in the pool on June 12th, and I can, I don't wanna necessarily say that this was never gonna happen without Mark Koenig or Michelle Echols, but I can tell you, we would've been spending a lot of time trying to find the thirty people that were gonna replace Michelle and Mark to do all the work that needed to be done so the kids get into the pool on Monday. There was a, on top of all of that volunteer work, I believe it was three Saturdays ago, if I've got my calendar in my head correctly, the swim team put out a notice to all of its email population soliciting folks to come down and lend a hand to do everything from get rid of mouse nests to cleaning bathrooms to cleaning whatever. I mean, really, you know, when Michelle made her way around, we don't know if it's three hundred and eighty feet of, linear feet of gutter that really hadn't been touched and who knows when, all been cleaned. But anyway, I wanna just read through the list of folks that attended that Saturday. Michelle was in Ohio or somewhere, so she wasn't there that day, but certainly was on every other day. The folks that were there on the Saturday, John Kitty, Douglas Hartwell, Kara Quinn, Mark Koenig, Lisa Casey, Rennie Perry, Lowell Bertrand, Lynn Rappaport, Steve Rappaport, Eric Laboue, Leanna Peabody, John Stroop, Sarah Stroop, John Coburn, and Phil Johnson. And if I've missed somebody, I'm sorry. I reached out to Lisa to the list of names. She gave me the names, and then she thought of somebody else, and we got him on the name, so we think that, we think that we have everybody. The other thing, another person that has spent a lot of time at the pool is Rick Shaput, as I mentioned to the council a while ago, that I posed the idea to Rick about being in charge of water quality. He was in charge of a water plant when he was in the Marine Corps, all right, so he knows about water quality for consumption, and obviously, running a pool, there's actually a lot of similarities in water quality of a water you're drinking and water you're swimming in. So Rick has spent a number of hours down there. I mean, I drove samples. I'm the taxi cab driver. I drive samples down to Pool World, spend a little time with my high school classmate, Randy Coole, telling war stories and fish stories. And anyway, we started the regiment of getting the water ready, you know, last Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday, and Rick has gone down there with good equipment. I mean, you know, we have, we don't use little homeowner strips for testing stuff. We have digital equipment that you can run a test and actually come up with some very accurate results and be able to respond better. So I talked to Rick again today, Mike, as I mentioned to you, and he goes there at night and early in the morning, and I really feel like we're in very good hands. Also, he has two people that work for him that he has not trained yet relative to the pool, because, you know, Rick, he will be likely taking some vacation at some point. We gotta make sure that we have some depth in this group. So once Rick has got his confidence level to a point that he then can train others to do the testing that needs, needs to happen down there, I think, I really feel like we're in good hands. Rick has also done some vacuuming at the pool, and, you know, we've had some discussions about that the end of this wand is, Michelle, what is it like this? Something like this. And so if you can imagine, you know, if your house, if you had, it's the width of a vacuum cleaner, so if you thought about owning a house that was as big as the surface of the pool and trying to vacuum it with that, that would take you a minute or two. So his immediate thing was, "Don't they sell a four-foot wide attachment to do this thing?" We've also talked about, about the robotic thing, so I can tell you, you know, you know, that's some, you know, there's a number of things on the list, but that's one of them that needs to happen, because I will tell you that when the kids, all the kids jumped in the pool on Monday, it actually stirred up things a little bit, the water got a little bit cloudy, and it wasn't because of necessarily water quality, but it was just because of, you know, a certain amount of settling that occurred in the pool. So I think that's in, that's in good hands. We have, there's, it's either four, I believe that it's fifteen employees at the pool. Jen Kingsley is a pool director. And then in addition to that, in addition to the fifteen employees, I don't wanna count Ally Sterns twice, but swim team, Michelle can talk about swim team, swim team has four employees this year, and they started on Monday. So I think that Joan's been selling passes like crazy. One of the things that is, that is a little different procedurally wise is that all season's passes will be sold out of City Hall. So that word has gone out on Facebook and websites and whatever, and just wanna remind folks that that's where they need to go. That way, they're filled out properly, there's a different rate between Vergens residents and non-Vergens residents, and there's, Joan knows where the town lines are, so we make sure that people are paying, paying the right fee. There will be three groups. Last year, there was two. This year, there's three groups that will be using the pool on occasion. The Mary Hogan Children's Program, the ISSP, I never know what that stands for, but it's another, it's another program that shows up, and then this year, the Vergens Program, I don't know if it's called Fusion, or whether or not it has a...
I think it's called Thundercats.
It's what?
Thundercats.
Thundercats, that Tara Brooks is running, and so there's another group that is gonna be there as well. So with days like yesterday, we should be, should be busy. Now, you know, obviously, the pool, you know, always, you know, as I mentioned to you before, when we put the budget together, there's no capital expenses there, and there's still a list of things that need to be done, and then maybe, Mike, if you wanna talk about what your plan is relative to, you know, determining priority and trying to figure out how money's gonna suddenly arrive to do other needed work at the pool.
Okay. Thanks, Mel. First off, it's people like Mark, Michelle, and other volunteers that step forward and make Vergens the community it is. They take pride in what goes on and what happens here in the city. We can't do this alone. We are a very small force and can't afford taxes to support a lot of the things that we want to do. One of the things I sent to Mel today was something to do with ways to raise funds, and he will, and I haven't had a chance to talk about it, we will next week. It's like everything else that we're trying to get done. It's going on a schedule so that it will not hopefully get lost somewhere. One of the things that we did, and I asked Michelle to be in charge of one segment, but we're going, I'm starting a Citizens Advisory Council. We've already started, I'm gonna call it more of a pilot-type program, but it's gonna fold into the end product. I don't have the end product written yet, but I'm Googling, trying to do some research to figure out. They usually, an advisory council is specific to a particular need within the community. Somehow, I wanna create pedestrian safety, a pool advisory committee, and I've already emailed, or Lisa and I have been emailing back and forth, Lisa Casey, and the conversations that's going so far is, I need a brief mission statement, very however short, just so that we establish what the guidelines are. I need a list of needs, what is needed for that pool to be the best it can, and then, no, excuse me, list of wants, no, needs first, and then wants second. It's like, this is not quite Christmas yet, but we're working on it. And the program that I was gonna talk to Mel about next week has to do with people being able to donate monies to specific functions within a city to help offset costs. So they're trying it in another community, so I, we gotta work out the semantics, see if it's possible before we throw it out. So again, I have other people to thank, other than, again, Mark and Michelle, the swim team, the parents, Rick Shaput, Mel Liftoff, because these guys are getting paid, but they still were there, is the city public works people. They've been down there working alongside, not as much as Michelle and Mark. I wanna thank the council members that stopped by to see what was going on and getting up to speed as to what was happening. That's always a good thing. That is a very positive thing. Show these people the support that they need for the job that they're doing. So on that, anybody else?
Just real quick, the elementary school did put out the word as well for that weekend work day, so they should be also, it wasn't just swim team, the Mac boys, the principal put that out to all school families, so we could try and get a bigger pool of people to come. And just so that everybody knows, it's been about a hundred and sixty-five hours when you add in everybody who has put time into getting that pool ready to be filled. That's a lot of hours.
I was gonna estimate even higher than that. I thought Mark alone had close to a hundred and fifty, and you were right alongside with that, close to those numbers, so.
He's probably doubling. I was lowballing, but a hundred and sixty-five hours is a lot of hours to really think about how to move forward on that. Volunteerism is great. Volunteerism has its part in this, but there needs to be a bigger part in it. And coming from swim team, we were happy to help organize that first volunteerism effort, but we don't, people asked us why we were the ones calling it. We have a vested interest in the pool. That was our answer. But if volunteerism is something that is going to be promoted to care for the pool, it really needs to come from the city, I think, not from an organization that pays... it really needs to come from the city, I think, not from an organization that pays to use the pool.
I should.
Can I ask you a question? Is it every year that much work would be to open it, or is it because it was in such a different state this year that it took more hours?
I sincerely hope the latter.
I sincerely hope the latter. I think that unfortunately, we had some years of maybe not the best attention being paid to the pool. And I think that we're all paying much better attention, and I think it needed to maybe get where it was to get better. And I hope that it doesn't go back.
And one of the things that we were talking at one of our meetings is to try to put, like, you put your garden to bed, if you have a garden, you do certain things for that garden, so it's ready for the next year. We need to put the pool to better, to bed differently than what has been done in the past. So, it's a lot cleaner when it goes, when we shut it down. So, there's a lot of efforts, processes that we need to put in place. Mel is, Michelle has stepped forward with a list of things that should be happening. We've asked her to be eyes and ears to help us, to make sure. Mel can be only in so many places, and if things aren't a standard, a high, high standard is not met, we need to know that so that we can try to rectify it. The word went out to the individuals that that standard is there and needs to be met. So, sir?
I just want to say that I actually appreciate the volunteer day, but I agree that it needs to be intentional, and it shouldn't be quite the extent that it was. I guess my question is, why can't it be funded by taxes? The city gives away a lot of money to social services. I am pro-social services. I'm pro that, but we seem to be, you know, I don't know how much money that totals, but it seems like, why can't the pool kind of fall into that category?
So, the pool is owned by the city. It's not a social service agency, and so, I wouldn't put it in that category of people petitioning for money and have the voters act on that. The pool budget, the pool budget is about $55,000 a year. With that $55,000, there actually are some costs that the city incurs that, and I'm not crying about this, I'm just trying to give you a bigger picture, that there's $55,000 that is expended for the pool, which is the salary of the folks that work there, swim, actually, it's swim team coaches as well, that are municipal employees, all the chemicals, electricity, maintenance, repair, all that stuff, $55,000. What is not seen in there is Joan's time, Melissa's time, handling the money that they have to with swim team lesson payments and the daily receipts that come up. It doesn't include any of my time, doesn't include any time of public works, and it won't include any time of the wastewater treatment plant operators. We don't clock out of one department and clock into another. So, if you were to put a price tag on that, you know, there's probably $10,000 worth of labor, if you will, that might go into there that you don't really see as a part of that budget. So, now we talk about where does the revenue come from? Well, the revenue comes from swim team registrations, which offset the swim team coaches, season's passes, lesson revenue, daily receipts, the programs that I just talked about, ISSP, Mary Hogan and Virgin's. We allow them to kind of charge it, and then we bill them. They actually pay us a little money on the front end for the first week or so of the pool, and then we settle up at the end of the year after doing a tally. All of that money comes in. It's called the Sam Fishman Memorial Pool, and that's because the Sam Fishman, we passed away, there is a fund that allocates $2,000 a year. We get her check every year. And there is the, and then the major chunk of money is, is that we have this watershed money. When the city sold the watershed property in Bristol for $300,000, that money has grown, and the income on that money is used, must be used for recreation purposes. And the city historically has allocated $6,000 a year towards the pool budget. That got increased to $9,000 a few years ago. In this past budget round, it's increased to $11,000. So, that's where the subsidy is coming. It's not coming from a general fund property tax subsidy. It's coming from that fund. So, I think what you're alluding to is whether or not, you know, I can tell you, I don't know if there's a municipal pool on the planet that makes money. They all need to be subsidized, and because you can't charge rates. If your rates go high, then you end up, I call it the pool for the rich. It has to be affordable to the community. So, but there is no, there's no allocation from the general fund, i.e. property taxes, to also subsidize the operation, other than the indirect money that I just described to you.
Yeah. So, my question is just, and I don't, I'm genuinely asking, I'm not having imposition of point of view here, but like, we maintain our sidewalk, we maintain our roads. The pool is a huge asset for the city. It seems like it should be paid for out of the general fund to some extent, and then the other stuff can subsidize the costs. So, I don't know why that couldn't happen, but maybe there is a reason.
There is no reason why it couldn't happen. There isn't, it's...
It might be helpful to have perspective to know how long the city has actually owned the pool.
I'll go back even further. The city was, the pool was built in 1965, and it was owned by the Virgin's graded school district. And when the Virgin's graded school district was going through its dissolution in 2010, the city was approached to see if the city would take over ownership of the pool. And I can tell you that the budgeting, when it was owned by the school, was really no different than what I just described to you just now. They raised money the same way that we do, and there was a subsidy in that the city used to write a check from revenue sharing dollars or from the watershed fund to the graded school district. So, we took over ownership and operation of the pool for the 2010 season.
One of the things that we try to do is keep our tax rate as low as possible and still be economically sound in what we do and how we run the city. That would be a major impact on our tax rate, but also, there are other things that we should be doing as well. So, that's why it's kind of, we're kind of spreading the money across the board a little bit to get as much as we can. So, I don't disagree with you. I just...
How do you decide where the money goes, to what, the sidewalk, to the roads, or how? I don't have any idea.
It's what the city council does.
Oh, you all, you all believe...
It's actually not all that different than when you're at home and you wonder if it's a new refrigerator, or, you know, new patio, or new whatever. It's, you know, that's what the city council does. They've got to put a budget together, and, you know, one of the things people, you know, like, what does the city council do? Well, one of the things that city do is they tell you exactly how much you've got to pay. That's what they do. They actually calculate your bill that you must pay, all right? And so, that's a lot of, that's a lot of power that the city council has. Set a tax rate, and you shall pay that bill, all right? So, they have to decide, you know, where the priorities are as to where that, you know, where money is going to be spent. They have to make all of those decisions.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Thanks. I'm Sarah Stroh. My name is on that name of swim team appearance. And I appreciate the realities of limited resources and maybe a concern for not raising taxes in our own town, but I would plead to the city council to think about the greater economic impact of that infrastructure on our town. If I think about who was at the first day of swim team today, we have friends from Moncton who drove in, who have nothing to do for an hour while their children are in swim team. So, they might go to Three Squares and buy a meal. We have lots of families in this town, young families like mine, and we live on Green Street, and have lived here for nine years, five in that house, thanks to Lynn. Our families who have choices about where we're going to locate, be in Burlington or Middlebury, where our jobs are, have chosen to be in Virgin's. And one of the reasons we've chosen to be here is because of the strong sense of community, but also because there's something to do here on the weekend. And if the existing infrastructure that we have is left to neglect in favor of new building opportunities around the town, I appreciate that there's something shiny about newness, but there's something really, really valuable about protecting the assets that we already have. So, if you're thinking about expanding the tax base, I think it's about getting young families into Virgin's. If you're thinking about having more sales taxes paid, it's about having families coming from many different towns, spending time at the pool, but then going and getting a creamy or lunch, or shopping at Arshaw's instead of Middlebury's, Hanover's. So, it is not simply about the outlays that the city makes to spend the $55,000 or additional $10,000 on maintaining the pool. I think we also have to think about this asset as generating revenue for our town. And I hope that the city council will, whether it's in the general fund or elsewhere, find the money to make regular investments in this. I was so heartened by the volunteer effort that showed up when Mark and Michelle put out the call. It made me so proud to be part of Virgin's, and I appreciate the impulse of having citizens involved in protecting our assets. But providing public goods is the job of the government, and that's you guys. And I hope that you will protect this public good of our small city, because it is the best recreational asset that we have.
Any other comments?
I'd also thank the crew, even if they weren't there for mad hours, because they were doing little things like replacing a sewer line, fixing a road, which followers just can't do. If I had a need for material or equipment, it was there within a couple hours. So, they just took care of what they could, and they also brought down guys to do stuff for a few days, too, so.
And they're behind the eight ball.
Had the city crew and the mayor not showed up on that last day at the pool, we'd not have water right now. Mark and I were at our tired bones, and had they not come that day, there wouldn't be kids washing around.
You know, Mike brings up putting the pool to bed, and I really can't press upon everybody here how important it is, and let me tell you why. Number one, it's the right thing to do. But let me just tell you, you know, I got a few, you know, swim team said, listen, we'd like to have a volunteer day, Mel. You know, what do you think? I said, great, you know, don't worry about insurance. We're good to go. Somebody gets hurt, there's no worrying about that, all right? And off they go. And there was a few emails that I received, like, why is swim, why is swim team, volunteer, you know, all this stuff, you know, why isn't the city doing this, why isn't the city, you know? And I found that very odd to think that, that how did volunteerism become a bad thing? I just thought it was a great idea, and it got great support. You didn't have to be there. Fortunately, these folks showed up. I think it's, I think it's just super, you know? It's a real, it's a super day. It's like greenup day, all right? So, I think that's great. But let me just tell you about our capacity. You know, where I live, the Public Works Crew, Memorial Day is a big day for this town. And my Public Works Crew, their job is to get that, this city, ready for Memorial Day. And it is in direct conflict with getting this pool ready for phys ed and swim team, all right? And so, therefore, where the support needs to happen, I think that the Public Works, they're willing to do anything. But I can tell you, if there's work to be done, the lesson that we've learned here, it needs to be done when the pool closes, because they have no capacity in the month of May, or they have limited capacity in the month of May.
Michelle?
Trust me, because I don't want to have to be standing in the pool deck and answering questions of where my lovely tan came from every year because I was sweating in the empty pool. April, you employ other people. You employ young people in our city.
Thirty.
Right.
Yeah.
So, right there seems like a great time, that the fear of frost has ended, to put some elbow grease on, into that pool every year.
Yeah.
There's an entire April break week.
And we need to start looking at those approaches, and this is, I'm just back from a short retirement, and I'm seeing some of these needs, and not that I'm going to correct everything that needs to be done, but we're learning. We've had the pool very short time and found out there were some serious needs, and it would have been nice to be able to hire somebody to do this professionally. But again, scheduling time, time to arrive, get it all done. It would just, you wouldn't be open today.
And I don't want to take backward steps, and I don't want to revisit the past, but this is not the first season that I have sat here asking for attention put into the pool. So, I think we, the attention is there, and I just don't want it to lose steam. I...
And that's part of that advisory, that's part of that advisory committee, you know? I did see some of your emails. I was prepping for tonight's meeting and could not respond, but I will. So, anything else, Michelle? I have a young lady behind you that wants to say something.
My name is, my name is Madeline Staub. I'm in second grade, and the swim team is important to me, and it takes a long time to get to the Middlebury Pool. So, when I swim, and when I swim at the pool, I get to swim with my friends. But if I go to the Middlebury Pool, I will not get to. Also, please know that people from other towns come to this pool. So, I hope that you know that this pool is very important to me. Please take care of the pool.
Thank you very much.
I'm Heather Kida. We live on School Street, and we, my kids can't do swim team right now. It's too much for them and too much for our lives as well. But we support the pool in lots of other ways, and we go there at eight o'clock so we can swim and cool off before we go back into our hot house. And we, they're there at swim lessons, and they're there with their babysitter all day long. And so, it's not, I just don't want this message to just be that, like, it's swim team, and it's swim team. It's like the whole community is, this serves. And it's very important to us as young families that live here, and we also are invested in this community. And I feel like the message sometimes isn't always supportive of us, of like, the young families that are living here and trying to make it, make it a better place. And I feel like Middlebury does a really good job at that, and we have a choice, right? Like, I also work in Middlebury, and we made a choice to live here in Virgin's, and we just want more feeling of support of, for young families, I guess.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. I don't know about this guy, this next guy.
Well, you've got to hear Shannon's.
Oh, appointment of zoning administration. Shannon?
Yes, at the most recent Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend the reappointment of Mel Hawley for the three-year term as zoning administrator.
Three years? Yeah. The three years is the law. I do want to make it crystal clear to you that I do need you to follow the law, all right? But I am not going to guarantee you three years of this. But the law, that's what the law says. There's no such thing as a one year, or 16 months, or whatever it is. So, that's what it is.
Can we refuse or can we press the issue?
Yeah. I don't know. I'd have to check our personnel manual. Do I have motion to...
I will make that one.
Motion made, and Jeff second it to appoint Mel as our zoning administrator?
That would be for a term ending 1920, and eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So, June 30th, 2020. Scary.
Okay. If I'm alive, still in, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Addison County Regional Planning Commission.
I wanted to just get this off your plate. The currently, the city of Virgin's has two delegates to Addison County Regional Planning, currently served by Shannon and myself. We have two alternates currently. The alternates are Cheryl Brinkman and former Mayor Bill Benton. I sent an email to Bill. He expressed no interest in continuing as an alternate delegate to regional planning. So, tonight, what I'm looking for, I didn't even ask you, Shannon. I didn't even ask you about this. But anyway, regardless, I'm looking for city council approval of Shannon and myself as delegates to regional planning and Cheryl as our alternate. And anybody, we have room for one more alternate. I mean, Shannon and I are pretty good about going to meetings. We don't... We don't go to every meeting, and Cheryl is actually pretty good about making sure that Virgens is, is represented, represented. So for, so tonight, I would request that those three seats be filled, and, you know, if there's somebody on the city council that just would love this position, then raise your hand. Otherwise, we would go to the other members of the Planning Commission and see if there's any interest from, from one of them.
First off, I'll take...
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion to appoint those three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn seconds. Any discussion on the three? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Is there anyone at one of these tables interested in serving? Hearing, none? Everybody's bite? Would you please go to the Planning Commission and ask if there might be one there?
Will do.
Thank you. City green tree removal.
So at the last city council meeting, I advised that I was not able to get Chris Olson, who's the county forester, to the city green in advance of your last meeting, but he did show up the next day, and his assessment of the five trees, well, actually, there's two trees in the back that I was concerned with the health, and then the three trees in the front that I feel are causing too much shade and to the point that we can't grow grass. And it was his conclusion that, that none of those five trees fall under the poor quality, poor condition category, and thus, any, any removal, removal of any of those, those trees would, would require to go through, would require the city council to go through a public hearing process to remove any of those five trees. So I have done nothing more. I, I do think that there is some trimming that can occur on all of those trees. The trees in the back, we can, we can certainly have Job Corps come and clean out any of the dead limbs, and, you know, it's, you know, Chris really, he sees dead limbs as just a sign of age, not a sign of death. It's, you need to, it's important that when dead limbs show that they be trimmed off because it's a source. So that's his clear recommendation on, on the back two trees, that we need to tend to those in that manner. And then in the front, you know, I, I think that we, you know, as tree warden, I would have no problem, you know, taking some limbs off from trees, all right? But, but I don't really have the authority to abuse that. So at this point, that's my, that's my plan. So if the city council, but believe me, if the city council wants to have a public hearing about tearing down, taking down three trees, I'm, I'm with you.
Do you need city council approval to thin? Take out dead?
No. Oh, dead? No, no.
Dead, dead or thin out?
No.
Okay.
I think there's already been quite a bit of talk, so I think we just better leave things the way they are, trim them and move on.
Okay. Everybody agree on that? All right. Says, 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 Mel, take charge. Just don't cut him off with a stone. Proposed twenty eighteen sewer department budget.
Okay, so I'm sorry I didn't get this out in, in either packet that I sent out to you, but what I put in front of you this evening is my proposed sewer department budget, and the second page that I gave you, I just thought you might be interested in where we are at debt load with the wastewater treatment plant. There is a, there is a dim light at the end of the tunnel here, if you will. You can see here that, that we have six more years of a hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and two dollars payments left on that. And so if you think about the year two thousand twenty-three, when you don't have to pay that, you know, you end up with this, goes right to the bottom line, all right? So the, the good news is, there is a, there is a light at the end of the tunnel here relative to the bond, but of course, out of the other side of my mouth, I'm going to tell you, don't forget, we have a twenty-year C S O, combined sewer overflow date that, that we're up against as well, so we need to continue to invest in our sewer, in our sewer lines to get infiltration out of the system. The company that, you know, we, we allocated money to the company that's going to both inspect and document all of our pipes. We, we had a kickoff meeting last week. That project is underway. That's going to give us information to really tell us really how many linear feed of clay tile mains do we have remaining in the city because that's a major source of infiltration. So getting back to this budget, and, and I again can, you know, I, I know, I know I'm going to catch some heat from Mark and Jeff, you know, because they, they voted against my recommend, recommended, if I remember correctly, voted against my recommended rate increase from eighty-seven fifty per quarter to ninety-six, ninety-two, Joan, right? What are we, what do we pay?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six dollars, okay, ninety-six dollars because there was a feeling that, that that would only last a year, all right, and, or less. And I can tell you that if you look at this here, the red ink is eighteen thousand dollars, all right? And if you, if you looked at the F Y sixteen fund balance for sewer, it had forty-two thousand dollars. Isn't it ironic that I've got these numbers where there's twenty-four thousand dollars worth of red ink in our current budget, of which is in a little bit of trouble already, not a lot, but in a little bit of trouble? And then I've got a proposed budget that shows eighteen thousand dollars in red ink. And so if you add the twenty-four thousand in red ink to the eighteen in red ink, it equals the forty-two thousand that you had on June thirtieth, all right? So I can tell you, I'm not, I'm not here, I'm not here pounding the table for a rate increase because that would be against what I told you a year, year ago. But, and I'm sure we're going to hear from Mark and, Mark and Jeff. I, I can tell you, based on these numbers, I think it's going to be very, very difficult to think that we can go without a rate increase until two thousand and twenty-three, all right? I think you can go another year, and when you go another year, your fund balance, I'm going to predict that fund balance to be zero. That's where you're at, and that's, it's okay, you know? We're not supposed to be rolling in dough up here, but, you know, you know, people don't like to leave their personal checkbook with zero balances. That's, that's paycheck to paycheck is what that is. So that's not in a great place. So I don't think that, I don't think that you need to talk about a rate increase tonight, but I can tell you, you're going to be talking about a rate increase, you know, I'm going to say, you know, in a year, if not sooner. So.
Be better if we're going to do anything baby steps in the increase rather than anything major, so, so, but.
So at some point, I mean, obviously, Joan isn't going to be doing a billing. Her next billing is in August for the period of July, you know? I mean, it's, it's not like you, if you're going to make a rate, it's not like taxes where you adopt a budget, you set a tax rate, she does the tax billing, and off you go. You know, you can, you can do rate any quarter, you know, I wouldn't do it anything other than starting at a quarter because we do, the lion's share of our billing is done quarterly. There is a, maybe forty accounts that Joan does on a monthly, but if you're going to do a rate adjustment, you do it starting a new quarter. And, you know, I'm not suggesting that you, that you look at a rate increase for effective July one, but I think that you should be asking me to look at these numbers, you know, sometime in December, see how we're, see how we're doing. Because we certainly don't want to, we don't want to go in the hole and start having to, we don't want to be digging ourselves out of a hole.
I would not want to see a rate increase in the winter time. I think it's too hard on people after the holiday, heating, all the other things that happen in the winter. So I think if we're going to do something, we need to either do it before winter so people are, can, are knowing it ahead of time, or wait till spring. So I don't know what you're thinking.
Well, let me just tell you one, one thing is, I am, I am puzzled about electrical usage at the plant, all right? And I know I've talked to the board a little bit about the solar panel thing that we have and whatever, but I am puzzled about that. The other thing you'll notice that I have dropped our biosolids allocation from fifty thousand to forty thousand, and that's as a result of my conversations with Rick, is he really is very confident there is a different way to handle our biosolids out of the lagoons at something considerably less than fifty thousand dollars a year. I'm not, you know, we need to know that, you know, you can talk all you want, but it's, it's got to be real, all right? And if, if we can get our, the annual allocation can be lowered by using a different method of disposing of lagoon sludge, you know, we can reflect that. But those are the two line items that I see here. I will tell you, Rick has done a lot of improvements at the plant, and you do have a capital reserve fund, you know, in Fund Eight periodically when I give you the special projects and capital funds. In Fund Eight, Biosolids Fund, Sewer Line Replacement Fund, and Capital Fund, all of the sewer connection fees go into the Capital Fund. And when Rick is replacing a chemical feed pump or doing anything that's capital-like, we've been charging those things to the Capital Fund. So if you wonder like, you know, plant maintenance, you see that we've dropped that down, and that's because we've done a lot of work. You know, the filters have all been updated. We've got work behind us, and we will use that Capital Fund when we need it. But there's not, there's only so many buckets, you know, that we can, we can draw funds. So this is, you know, it's okay, but I've seen better, I've seen better times.
And you get that twenty-year C S O that's creeping up on us?
Yeah.
And where's that money going to come from if we have to do some major overhauls here? Other than bonding?
Yeah, absolutely, bond, yeah.
So, so I don't, I don't know if we could get ahead any sort of a curve by trying to get some funds now and not have to worry about paying as much interest.
Not, not major, not major increase.
I think that what will end up happening, I mean, we talked about the, you know, you know, calendar year two thousand twenty-three, you know, as having a year without a bond, but I can tell you, you'd be voting on one in twenty-one or twenty-two. I don't know that you'll ever see a year without a bond at the wastewater treatment plant, which, which is actually typical.
Okay. Any questions on Mel?
So, sorry.
Related sewer budget? Not a pretty picture, but I love it. Okay, so other, we'll go to six, city manager's report, number eight.
But I sent you out an updated budget report. It doesn't reflect a handful of bills that got processed today. I can tell you, you know, I looked at this real closely, and administration is going to get, be pretty much right on the money. Police Department, I really suspect that we're going to be under budget in police. Haven't seen that too often. Public Works, it looks like we're way under budget, but you've seen the signs out about paving that's going on. We're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars here, you know, before June thirtieth, and so those numbers will greatly change, but there actually is a surplus in, in the, in the, as a result of Public Works because, you know, if you look at, you know, winter maintenance materials, you know, we're, overtime is under, I mean, it, it actually is in good shape. General expenses are straightforward there. Recycling is fine. Sewer, right, the budget I've got is, we're at, we're at ninety-nine point seven-six percent of budget, all right? And it's the thirteenth of June. It's not, not feeling real good about that, but what do you have left? You know, the bond's been paid, most everything's paid, but you got wages, and you got electric bills, your consumables, and so, you know, it wouldn't surprise me that, you know, we might run, you know, four, you know, four or five percent over in sewer. Wouldn't surprise me if we get done, so that's, that's not, that's not minor, all right? So again, it's going to, means you really, you're going to be looking at sewer rates here sooner rather than later. Pool, don't look at these pool things because we're starting a new year, they would just confuse you because we've been collecting, collecting swim team fees and whatever.
Can I ask you a question about how much the supplies cost?
On what? Supplies?
The concrete and the caulking, how much that all costs?
Sure. It's, absolutely, yeah. One of the bills was, was three hundred and eighty-three dollars, the other bill was eleven hundred and forty-seven. I loaded those into the system. They're not in your warp because I didn't load them until today, Mark, and that's because, as you know, Michelle, we were lacking some activators, and I, I loaded the bills as if they're, as if the product came here, and it, and perfectly, all right? But there was a problem with some of that product that I've called, and so, anyway, that's, that's the ticket.
So about fourteen hundred dollars?
Fourteen hundred dollars, yeah, yeah. And, and I, you know, Mark, pardon me, I think you're looking at, you're looking at fourteen hundred next year, or this fall, you know? I mean, really, because it's not, it's not done, as you know.
Well...
Gotcha, yeah.
I think the caulk holes were, we needed probably one or two of caulk.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens there.
Yeah.
And if I had had three more gallons of the concrete, I probably would have finished, although there's no way my hands would have held up for three more. I, I hit the limit on that. But what got smoothed on the wall, it got at least three coats on it, but it's not flush with the gutter in some places. So that, assuming, cross fingers that everything holds like it should.
Yeah.
Smoothing it out shouldn't take very much, and the holes that we're finding in the bottom, I don't suspect.
Yeah, the key is really how well does this stuff hold up, okay? I mean, we've been patch, you know, there's patches on patches in the pool, you know, and you, I mean, this year, I think that what got patched, there was nothing left behind. I mean, there was enough people walking around, and if you, when you heard that, you knew you had nothing underneath of it. That got chopped out of there and patched. Like, there's no left behind holes, right, Mark? I mean, really, I mean, so, and so one of the things that we will, I think sometimes we thought, well, I wonder if this was last year's, was this a hole that was there last year? We don't have that this year. Everything has been patched, and then we will know next year, you know, as to whether or not, you know, we're going to have a little bit of patching or like, man, we, we got a big, we got a big problem here. And we're not going to know that, but now, but now we have a good base of information.
Okay. I'll start with that then?
Yeah, I don't, that's all I got on budget. You know, we got one more, yeah, we got one more meeting, you know, this is the time in next, you know, next month, you know, next meeting, I should say. My general fund budget will be to you. I'll be able to give you some idea about, about fund balance at that time.
Think we'll be able to set the rate that night?
You will.
We'll have to have a special meeting.
You know, it's, it's funny, it's funny, but talked to Bill Benton about this, it's like, did, I know I wrote the calendar the same way we wrote it, so we did the general fund budget and tax rate all in one night. Is that what we did?
Yep.
Wow, okay, that's, yes, yeah, that's what we're going to do. Grant list is done, all right? I'll get to that second, all right? So yeah, yeah.
Okay, people.
Yeah.
Six, six B, Mel?
All right, so just want to let you know that we lost. We lost that, as you saw. The, it's funny, the previous time we went through this process, the hearing officer agreed with the Board of Civil Authorities finding that a setting a five percent into the reserve fund, and this hearing officer, was not the same officer, concluded that a mortgage-imposed allocation to reserve fund is regarded as an expense, and because there was no rationale, clear rationale for the five percent, then, then, therefore, the hearing officer did what you read, all right? And so Joan has prepared, I'm assuming, let me, let me just tell you something, let me tell, I, I, let me tell you a little bit of the bad news about this, is that when you, when you lose an appeal, obviously, you're out city taxes, all right? But you're actually out education taxes as well because the tax department has already finalized our payments to the school, and we've already paid them, and it's gone. So let's say if you lose, in this instance, the difference is fifty-two thousand dollars times a school tax rate of a buck fifty, so that's seven hundred and sixty dollars, all right? That seven hundred and sixty dollars is, has to be taken out of city money because it's not like Joanne's going to give me the money back, all right? It's toast. So if these... It's toast, so if these, but I did send an email to Brad James to say, we, you know, we paid our school, is there any way, is this thing going to be reconciled so I can get my education money back, all right? I haven't heard back from him. I can't imagine, I'm the first person ever asked that question, but that is a problem, that if you drag these things out too long and you lose, you lose your city money and school money that's already been paid, all right? So let me just tell you, I've lost enough money already. If you guys want to go to the Supreme Court, then have at it, but I think that you just lick your wounds and move on, and that's the way it is, so.
Okay.
We're probably gonna, although we do owe them some money, Joan and Joan and I will figure out.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, okay. So I think the law, we haven't read the law. I think the law, and it says a credit, oh, credit?
Credit.
Thank you, okay. So we won't be writing a check. We will be figuring out the accounting on issuing a credit on next year's bill.
Okay.
So that's that one.
Other. Is there a precedent that's been set that we'd get worried about in the future? Not necessarily for them, but for anybody else, which is why we might want the Supreme Court to make a bright line rule on this, or is this just a one-off that is just weird?
Well, you know what? If I was going to spend my money on something, Mark, I would spend it on improving this law. I think that, I don't think the legislature, when they created this law, has a full understanding of how it works. And so I think the law is, I think it's the law that's flawed, in my opinion, because even if we went to the Supreme Court and won, then the lobbyists would turn around and change the law to there. So I think it's, I think there's a flaw, to me, there's a flaw in the law.
Yeah. I said, sometimes it's worth the fight because of what might happen later.
Yeah.
But if this is just a one-off, it's just kind of a weird thing, and it's not likely to really impact us every single year, then it's not worth it.
Well, it will impact us every single year, absolutely.
Well, I've heard this, but I mean.
Yeah.
And maybe we need to get Warren and/or Diane and talk to them about seeing what they can do to address the issue in the law.
Yeah, I'm struggling, I'm really struggling with the logic on this. They paid $525,000 for the property, they did, they absolutely did. And to think that they won a hearing saying that the values for, whatever the number, 469, okay, anyway, so.
Any other topics of interest, Mel?
Tennis courts are done. Tennis courts got done earlier this week.
Dogs.
Pickleball, pickleball's in, yeah, I sent an email to, I have pickleball court watchers, Carolyn Thompson sent her a thing, Kathy Ross here sent her a thing, they're all happy about pickleball, so, yeah, pickleball, that's done. I mentioned about the sewer line thing is done. We have a, I should be tomorrow, I should see the preliminary plans for the sidewalk extension project on North Main Street, should see that tomorrow.
Dogs will be in this week?
Yeah, yeah, they're, you know.
I know, they're getting held up.
That's the plan, for sure.
They're trying to get the dogs in before LCI, which is this weekend.
Yeah. Junior fishing, you're good.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'll do that.
That's it for me.
You all set?
Okay, I'm going to try to fly through because of the time it is. Citizens Advisory Council, we started one, and that's the swimming pool, and I won't name everybody's name because I'll miss somebody, but there's at least six people on, I think, Advisory Council, and they have a little task at hand, but I, it's very strong message, and I understand it. They don't want to lose, as Michelle said, they don't want to lose the momentum that they got. It's underway, let's keep that up at a high level. Pedestrian Safety Committee, Mark, Matt has indicated that he's able to serve but not chair it, so I am looking for a chairperson for a pedestrian safety committee. One of the things that I would like to see is, first off, maybe some literature or something to let people know that make Vergens a safer place by crossing at a crosswalk. You know, something along that line, let's see where we can do to try to get the momentum. People are moving in and out of cars, I'm his fault, and I will try to practice what I preach in the future, should I have to cross any roads. But, so, that needs to get going, and I got to find somebody who is willing to chair that, and I know that you're serving on it as well. You said you would.
Was that Heidi?
Uh.
Heidi Mullen.
Heidi, or, it's not Heidi, it's Shannon.
Shannon, sorry, sorry.
She said she would serve on it. I will try to, I don't think she had that much interest in chairing it, but I will run that back by her because I stopped in and saw her a little while after the meeting.
There are a few other people that are interested in pedestrians, so we might be able to.
Can you kind of take somewhat of a lead, not necessarily the position?
I can chair, find me a chair.
Can you chair, find me a chair? Okay, good fun.
I also still have flag material, if we want to find other intersections.
Some of those are fading, I don't know.
Well, the PVC is fading because it just got quick spray paint, because that was just a, let's see what happens, but.
Yeah, no.
But the flags, yes, I have, I've taken a few home to repair them. I feel like the Grinch taking home the tree. Because I worry about people's blocking, like, why are you taking the flag away? It's broken.
I was heading down Creek Hill tonight, and there was some people were crossing with a dog and a couple kids. One kid tried to get a flag out, a parent grabbed him, and the little boy stayed behind and tried to get a flag out, and the other parent, another parent went back and grabbed him.
They get all the flags.
Don't mess with the flags! It's like, that's what they're there for, bad?
I can't understand.
Okay, Joan, update on payment with credit cards?
Okay, I've been looking into that, and, geez, I should have printed my email, but I'm not sure of the company, but we're going to get a charge card so people have the ability to use debit or charge cards. And he's, I'm having to contact NIMREC so they can interact, the programming, so when people want to pay a property tax bill with a charge card. But, so, it's coming, it's not here yet, but.
Okay.
They're moving in that direction.
You've got some.
And there won't be any charges to the city.
That's what I was wondering.
All the fees will go back to them, and it's not unreasonable. It was like 2.7 or 2.8%. There's a minimum, a minimum fee, you know, for like three bucks, up to an amount, and then it goes to a percentage of whatever they're charging.
And what we'll need to do is do some documentation of how that's going to run, so there's a procedure, I think, within the council as to how the end product works, so that the citizens know what they're getting.
Yeah, I do think it's time. We have a lot of people that come that, like, getting a marriage license. It's not big money being spent, but more and more people live on a debit card and, you know, rather than carrying cash, and so I think it will be very handy. So we're on our.
And the fee is charged to the user, not the.
Not the city.
Yeah.
And so that's a good thing. All righty, thank you. Fishing Derby, the 23rd, Friday, 24th, Saturday, fishing from 5:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m., and awards will be presented on June 25th. There's Amanda Rock with karaoke on Friday night, if you want to come down and have a good laugh, or sing along and see if somebody else can have a good laugh, you know, be, by all means. Some of the kids that sing down there, they're really good. There's a rock band that's playing Saturday night, and.
I got word back from Ben that everything's a go, they just need to schedule lighting with Green Mountain Power to get access to set the lights up.
Good.
So Lighting the Falls will be Saturday night, the 24th. Senior Cracker Barrel, I've been working with Michelle Eastman, and we put it out to the 25th of July in 11:15 at 50 Armory Lane. The reason we pushed it back is she wanted to advertise it to some of her newspaper and communications so that we could try to get a better turn, you know, outcome for that. Efficiency Vermont is holding, Efficiency Vermont and the Partnership are sponsoring a home energy creation and consumption informational workshop at Kennedy Brothers, 11 Main Street, tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m. till 7:30. Make sure I get that. Lynn, you want to pass those down?
Do you want to pass those down?
Here, Mel, you have your own souvenir. Mel was a good sport. We got to visit the kids up at the Victory Baptist Church, and I could see they really wanted to talk to George first, so I let George go first, Mel talked second, and I talked last, but they were just, and some of the questions they come up with, and they knew about the equipment that George has, but that was a big thing, so don't say you haven't ever seen your city manager in cuffs. He was a good sport. And don't post this at the post office, okay?
Yeah, it's actually, it's the cover of the inner report.
You know, I was kind of wondering who we were going to dedicate it to.
That's an idea.
Yeah.
That's a good one, yeah.
So, but it was really fun. Solar, I started talking to a solar company about deferring some of the costs of consumption energy within our buildings, and unless you want to build a unit that will take and produce $4,000 a month, you really can't do it, you can't get funding. And the other thing is Addison County is so flooded with solar energy right now, Green Mountain Power doesn't want to add anything, so just to let you know some of the stuff that I'm doing. And if at any one of these meetings I start throwing too much information out and you don't find it of value, let me know, I'll try to cut back. Got an invite to the governor's invitational fishing derby last Thursday. Got to rub elbows with, and talk to the governor and several dignitary. One of the persons that I talked to about setting up a meeting was Secretary of Transportation about traffic, truck traffic in Vergens, so. The other thing is, on the fishing derby, they don't need any sort of a public assemblance permit. We're good? I just want to touch, make sure.
The letters will, I'll be sending letters out this week to the residents of Comfort Hill, High Street, and McDonough Drive in the vicinity of the derby because we closed McDonough Drive during the hours event, and traffic is routed up Comfort Hill, which has worked perfectly the last two, I think we've done that for two years now, so.
Yep, no, and it worked well. Back to the fishing derby briefly, and then I'll ask for adjournment. I would ask each and every one of you to take, you know, I know everybody's had an extremely busy schedule, just take a half hour out of your day and go down and see the excitement on those kids. We may even have a Bobber Bob, who is a big Bob, person, Bobber Bob, may come to visit, so never know when he's going to show up, and I'm going to see if he does, maybe I'll take him up on Main Street. So, adjourned?
Well, I just wanted to say, I do have some sample ordinances for grass clippings.
Okay.
And they're all, all good ones, very short, and all about pollution of the waterways. So I do have that for whoever wants it.
Why don't you forward that to Mel? We'll put it in our next packet. Again, I apologize for the lateness of the meeting, but hopefully everything was beneficial.
And I'll make the motion to adjourn.
And Mark seconded it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, be quiet. So, hurry. Make it official. Let me see.